Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we'll start with our... With the invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
This bar heads, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that you bring to this community. We ask that you guide us through this meeting today. We also pray for the families of those killed, for the victims, and all others that have been touched by this tragic crime in Parkland, Florida. We pray for your almighty presence and your healing spirit. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The Black religious flag. The United States of America. And to the Republic which stands. One nation under God. In the scope of the Constitution and justice for all.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I guess we have a small crowd today. Today I'll begin with upcoming events that we'll be having at the Chamber of Commerce. This Friday, March 2nd, from 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., we will be hosting a ribbon cutting for a new member of ours, LyCar, hot tubs, pool supplies, among other things that they sell. The ribbon cutting ceremony will begin promptly at 11:00 a.m. The event will take place at LyCar's business location, which is 201 South Cherry Road, Suite 650 in Mission, Texas. Next on the agenda is our Buenos Aires Luncheon with Alberto Alto Mirano, co-founder and CEO of City Flag Inc. This will be on March 9th, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Cimarron Country Club. Following the next item on the agenda is our golf tournament, which will be on Friday, March 23rd. This is our annual golf tournament titled the Tom Landry Golf Classic. The event will take place at Cimarron Country Club, with registration beginning at 7:00 a.m. and a tee time of 8:00 a.m. Teams of three will begin at $500, and we'll have additional sponsorship opportunities also available. Last thing on the agenda for today is, on Thursday, March 29th, we will be hosting a member spotlight mixer with our member Hawthorne Suites. The event will take place in our member's location, which is 4801 West Expressway in McAllen, Texas, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next item is the department reports. Are there any of you back there? Do we all have any questions? Don't hesitate to ask.
Mayor, not having any questions, I'd like to put it in form of a motion to accept the department reports as presented here in writing.
Second.
We do have a motion and second to go ahead and approve the department reports. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Citizens' participation, do we have anybody from the audience that would like to address Anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? If not, we go on to public hearings.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of a 6.01 acre tract of land out of Lot 26-12, West Edition, a shared land subdivision. The property is currently zoned AOI, and the applicant is rezoning the property to R1A. The applicant is Aaron Baye, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On February 14th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located along the west side of Stroud Road between Las Brisas and Thornwood Drive. As you can see here on the aerial, the area has large lots, single-family houses to the north, east, and south. To the west, we do have some orchards, so that there's a property that's still zoned agriculture. Thus, the R1A that is being requested is directly consistent to its surroundings. There was no public opposition. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
You have any... How many lots are there? Or you're just changing the zoning, I'm sorry?
Yeah, they're changing the zoning to R1A, large lots, single-family. The lots are going to be deep, because if you look... It's going to only allow it for one road and one row of lots. It's not going to have lots on both sides. So Mr. Baye is proposing the lots to all exceed over 8,000 square feet.
Okay. Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, the adoption of ordinance is 4601, and do need a motion to approve the rezoning? So move, Mayor.
Second.
And the approval of the ordinance. We have a motion?
Second, Mayor.
And a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item B.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for rezoning of the east five acres, of the north 10 acres, of the south 20 acres of Lot 27-8, West Edition, a shared land subdivision. The property is currently zoned AOI, and the intent is to rezonate to R1. And the applicant is Aaron Baye. And if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On February 14th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located half a mile south of 2 Mile Road along the west side of Mayberry. The surrounding zones include single-family residential to the east, west, and south. And to the north, you do have the Mission Lateral ditch, which is zoned agriculture. The intent is to rezonate to R1, which is already in the surrounding areas, so he's keeping it in line with what's already there. And Carrollum will be extended going south in this subdivision. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? The ordinance is 4602, and we are rezoning the east five acres of the north 10 acres into a real subdivision. We do need a motion to approve our ordinance.
Want to approve?
Second, Mayor.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item C.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for rezoning of a tract of land containing 73.087 acres out of land, being a portion of the southern part of Portion 52. The current zoning is PUD residential, and the intent is to rezonate to PUD public non-residential. The United Irrigation District is the applicant, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On February 14th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located near the Military Road and Inspiration Road intersection along the south side of the Military Road. The United Irrigation District has purchased these 73 acres from the Benson Palm Development for the purposes of a water reservoir. The Benson Palm Development master plan has a mixture of anticipated land uses for their properties, and this one was designated as a residential use. Thus, we are needing to approve an amendment or a change to take it from a residential use to a non-residential public use. The surrounding zones include PUD residential to the north, west, and south, and PUD non-residential to the east. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
Okay, the ordinance is 4602, and we are rezoning a piece of tract containing 73 acres.
4603.
4603. Oh, three, I'm sorry. We do need a motion to approve ordinance 4603.
Want to approve?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve our ordinance and our rezoning. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item D.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for rezoning of .59 acres of the north, 1.35 acres out of Lot 202, John H. Cherry subdivision, and the east .41 acres out of the west, 11.80 acres out of Lot 202, John H. Cherry subdivision. The current zoning is C1 Office Building, and the intent is to rezonate to C4 Heavy Commercial. Lincoln Alameda Family Limited Partnership is the applicant, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On February 14th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located 400 feet east of San Antonio along the south side of Business Highway 83. The surrounding zones include C4 to the north, east, and west. And to the south, you do have multifamily. Being that everything's already C4 in the area, there was no public opposition. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.4... I mean, 1.1D is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? Our ordinance is 4604, and the rezoning of .59 acres out of the north, 1.35 acres out of Lot 202 of John Cherry.
Want to approve?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance and the rezoning. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item E.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and anti-consumption of alcoholic beverages at Marisco's El Siete Mares Number 2. The address is 2500 East Expressway 83, Suite 100. This is in Lot 5B, Cherry Land Place subdivision. The property is zoned C3, and Siete Mares Mexican Seafood Cocina LLC is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On February 14th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this CUP request. The 1,500 square foot restaurant is located within the Coles Commercial Plaza, approximately a quarter mile east of Cherry Road on the south side of Expressway 83. Previously, we have had a CUP here issued for the sale of alcohol for a seafood restaurant in 2010, and then again in 2016 for Diaz Diner Number 2. Diaz Diner has closed, and now the new applicant also wants to sell alcohol. Thus, he is needing a CUP. The hours of operation are Monday through Wednesday from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Thursday through Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. A total of five employees will man the operation. Parking and landscaping are existing and meet code, and there are no churches, public or private schools, or public hospitals within 300 feet. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of this CUP, subject... Approval of a two-year period from the time that the TABC license is issued, and that they must comply with all city and TABC code requirements and acquire a business license. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1E is now before you.
The adoption of the ordinance is 4605, and the conditional use permit. Do need a motion to approve?
So move, Mayor.
Second. Do have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit, and ordinance 4605. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item F.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1F is a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window at Squinkless Snack Land Inspiration. The address is 3009 North Inspiration Road, Lot C1A, and Rosa Maria Uribe is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On February 14th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The 1,250 square foot business is located at the northwest corner of Inspiration Road and Gessell Street. A CUP had previously been issued at this location in 2016 to a previous operator. However, the CUP is not transferable, so the new owner, operator, is here to seek a CUP. The days and hours of operation are every day from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. A total of two employees man the operation, and parking and landscaping are existing and meet code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for three years, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1F is now before you.
Our ordinance is 4606, and our conditional use permit. We need a motion to approve?
Want to approve the recommendation of a three-year?
Second.
Want to approve?
Do have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit, and also the ordinance 4606. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item G.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1G is a public hearing for preliminary and final plat approval. This is for a replat of Lots 5A and 11A, Expressway Business Park Phase 8 subdivision, being a replat of 5.067 acres, being all of lots 5A and 11A. This is at the Expressway Business Park Phase 8. Property is owned Light Industrial. The developers, MEDA, and the engineers, Melton and Hunt. On February 14th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this preliminary and final plat approval of the replat for lots 5A and 11A, of Expressway Business Park Phase 8 addition. The original plat contains 12 lots. Lots 5, 11, and 12 ranged in sizes of 1.6 acres to 1.796 acres, for a total of 5.067. And what they're doing, Mayor and Council, is they're taking three lots and making two lots out of them. The total is still going to be 5.067 acres, but instead of three lots, they're replating it to two lots. All utilities, streets, storm drainage are already existing, and they meet code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. Item 1.1G is a public hearing. This item's now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing? You all are doing away with one lot to make the other ones a bit bigger?
That's correct, sir.
We do have the recommendation from our President and Sonny and our staff as to the approval, so we do need a motion to approve.
So move, Mayor.
Second. Do have motion and second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item H.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1H is also a public hearing for preliminary plat approval of a replat of Lot 13, Expressway Business Phase 8 subdivision, and the applicant... It's currently zoned Light Industrial. The applicant is MEDA, and the engineers, Melton and Hunt. On February 14th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this replat of Lot 13. And this is similar to the one that we just saw. However, this is a 13... This is a 7.225 acre, a reserved tract of land that is going to be divided into four lots. So they're taking one big lot and making four smaller lots. The difference between this one and the other one, Mayor, is that this one, they're going to have to extend the street. So being that there's street work that needs to be done, we're only seeking a preliminary plat approval. This is not preliminary and final. This is just preliminary.
This one on H is preliminary?
Yes, this one is just preliminary. Once they complete that extension of Business Park Lane all the way down to the bottom two lots, then we'll bring it back for a final plat approval.
This is a public hearing, right?
This is a public hearing. There was no opposition. The board unanimously recommended approval. We're recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1H is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request that they're asking for? If not, we need a motion to go ahead and approve the preliminary plat.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat. It's been approved by the President and Sonny and our staff, so... All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item I.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1I is a public hearing for the adoption of an ordinance amending Article 3, Sections 1.9, 1.10, and 1.11 of Appendix A of the Court of Ordinances, allowing for the extension of any nonconforming uses or structures, or of structures and land combination which are manifestly arranged or designed for such use. And if the council is inclined to approve this ordinance change, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On February 14th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this ordinance change. And, Mayor, what this ordinance is going to be doing is, it's going to allow for nonconforming uses to reestablish themselves. If there is a... In the Old Town side, there's a lot of duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, that if they were to come in and want to redo their duplex or fourplex, we can't give them a permit because it's now zoned R1. So this allows them to improve their structures. I mean, some of the older lots have two houses on them. If they decide to rebuild one, well, we can't give them a permit because now it's R1. So this gives staff a little bit of latitude in allowing for the nonconforming use to be... To continue. They can rebuild their structures. They can add if they have the room.
And public hearing?
This... Yes. There was no public opposition. The board recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1I is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we need to adopt ordinance 4607 and 4608. And the recommendation is to approve by the staff and by President and Sonny.
Because it has two.
We do need a motion for the approval.
Want to approve?
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Disposition of minutes? We have the city council meeting that we had on...
Blank.
February 12th of 2018. We do need a motion to approve those minutes.
Want to approve?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. We also have to acknowledge the minutes that we had for the advisory committees that we have, Planner and Sonny Commission that we had on January 24th of 2018. We also had Parks and Recreation Board meeting on January 9th of 2018. Speed Memorial Library Board met on December 19th of 2019. The Sonny Board of Adjustments met on October 18th of 2017. And the Sherikov Course Advisory Board met on January 9th of 2018. We do need a motion to approve the acknowledgements of these minutes that we had with our board members.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item 4.1.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.1 is for preliminary plat approval of Las Palmas del Norte Number 3, Phase 2 subdivision. This is a tract of land containing 26.29 acres situated in Idaloo County, Texas, and also being a part of or a portion of Portion 50. This is in our ETJ. The developer is Nora Linda Garza, and the engineer is Javier Nojosa Engineering. The proposed subdivision is located 270 feet south of 5 Mile North Road between La Homa and Benson Palm Drive. The applicant is proposing 43 single-family residential lots. All the lots are at least half an acre or more, and will be on septic tank. All streets and drainage will be built to the county standards. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules and any other comments from the county planning department. We're also recommending that they add a plat note alerting the property owners of the buildable area. Some of the lots on the south side, lots 6 through 20, have a large utility easement that they can't build on. So the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that they insert a plat note alerting the people or the potential buyers of the utility easement of the non-buildable area. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 4.1 is now before you.
We do need a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Item 4.2 is approval of an ordinance creating City of Mission Possible Advisory Board, which will be an animal rescue and adoption advisory board, prescribing the membership of the board, name of the board, and specifying the duties of the board. This committee... There's been a committee that's been active for over a year, and so at this time, staff would like to create an advisory board. The board is going to be assisting with issues related to the impact of stray animals within the city and assist with rescue adoption of animals. The staff and city manager recommend approval of this ordinance.
4609?
Yes, sir.
Move for approval, Mayor?
Second. What's the ordinance number?
We do have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4609, creating a new Mission Advisory Board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item 4.3.
And Mayor, at this time, as I call out the names, I know we have some of the members of the advisory board that we will be appointing, so if they can please stand when their name is called. This is board appointments for the City of Mission Possible Advisory Board and Animal Rescue and Adoption. This is going to be five voting members. They will serve two terms. And Mayor Salinas's recommendation is to appoint Ms. Rosie Olivares, Timo Lewis, Homer Garza, Ivan Perez, and Madali Watu. These individuals have been working with this committee when we first established the committee, and so now we... Mayor's recommendation is to appoint them to this board.
Do we need one more?
Rosie is not... Was not able to make it today, sir.
Who was that?
Rosie Olivares was not able to attend today.
Rosie Olivares?
Yes, sir.
Well, we're going to appoint her?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We do need a motion to go ahead and approve?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Come on, boys.
Yes, Mayor and Council. We received a request from Awassad to use City Hall facilities for the early voting for Awassad's director's election of May 5th of 2018. There is one board of director, Mayor, that's from the Mission area, so that's why they would like to have that ballot available here in Mission for that director position.
So move, Mayor.
We're going to have the same day that...
It'll... Yes, sir. Their election is the same as ours.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second to go ahead and allow our board to have their elections at City Hall?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor. Hmm? Should we take a picture with the board? Come on.
You want to do that, Mayor? Take a picture with the new board?
Whatever. Yeah.
Yes.
4.4?
We're going to go ahead and go back to the advisory board. If it's okay before the meeting's over, we'd like to take a picture with y'all. You know, we want to thank them, Mayor, for the past six months. They've been very active with the City of Mission. They've been a committee, listening to some of their advice and putting some of the advice from the staff as well. But now, their recommendations will come to the council, and so we're very happy to be a part of that. If we can have the board members step up and take a picture with the mayor and the council, please. Thank you.
Everybody look over here. And then, three, two, one. Let me do one more. And three, two, one.[1732.71]
Mission AED grant project. The grant will allow the purchase of thirty automated external defibrillators. There is no cash match required for this grant. Staff and the city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion to approve a resolution fifteen thirty-seven.
More to approve.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Next item.
Item four point six. Mayor and City Council, the approval of a resolution supporting the submission of a grant application to the office of the governor for the twenty eighteen City of Mission AED grant project. The grant will allow the purchase of thirty automated external defibrillators. There is no cash match required for this grant. Staff and the city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion to approve a resolution fifteen thirty-seven.
More to approve.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Next item.
Item four point six. Mayor and City Council, the approval of a resolution supporting the submission of a grant application to the office of the governor for the twenty eighteen City of Mission SWAT Equipment Grant Project. The grant will allow the purchase of thirteen night vision monocular scopes. There is no cash match required for this grant. Staff and the city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve resolution number fifteen thirty-eight.
More to approve.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Four point seven, Chief?
Uh, item four point seven. Mayor and City Council, the authorization to accept the twenty eighteen Law Enforcement Officer Standards and Education Funds from the Texas Controller of Public Accounts. The awarded law enforcement funds will be utilized to train full-time police officers. The total amount of the award is nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Staff and the city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve the amount.
More to approve.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second to approve the award of nine thousand seven sixty-four sixty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Four point eight. Robert.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. Item four point eight is the authorization to award bid to Upper Valley Materials for the purchase of hot and cold mix asphalt for the Public Works Department. The City of Mission has accepted an open three bid responses for hot and cold mix asphalt. Staff recommends awarding to bid to Upper Valley Materials, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specification. Recommendations is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on a as-needed basis throughout the one-year term. Again, and then the contract terms will be for one year with two one-year renewal options. The total estimate bid for for this project is of four hundred and seventy thousand. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Was there another company?
We had another company, and the contract expires actually this this month, by by Wednesday.
What was the name of the company?
I, uh, it was, um, I, it was IOC.
And this one is same?
This one is Upper Valley Materials.
Is this the same thing as Copa?
It's the same, yes, yes, sir. The same thing as Copa.
Okay, the approval estimate is four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We need a motion to approve.
More to approve.
Second.
Do have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Four point nine.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members. Item four point nine is the authorization to solicit bids for roadside mowing and later removal services. Staff seeking authorization to solicit bids for roadside mowing and later removal services along I two, Interstate two, which is US eighty-three and FM three ninety-six on Saldúa Highway. Bid includes labor, materials, machinery, and equipment, and disposal services. Contract terms will be for one year with two one-year renewal options. Staff recommendation is authorization to solicit for bids for this item.
We do need to go ahead and solicit bids?
I'm want to approve the solicitation of bids.
Second.
Do have a motion and second to add and solicit bids for the roadside mowing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Four ten.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item four point ten, approval of supplemental work for work authorization number eight with Melton and Hunt related to the wastewater treatment plant, reuse line easement acquisition. Thirteen easements will need to be acquired as part of this project on various parcels of land. Estimated cost, one hundred and fifty-three thousand with one hundred dollars. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
That's what you need for the, all the parcels?
Yes.
That's correct, Mayor. This is a project involving the reusable water, the one we're going to send to the park. Okay, we need a motion to approve the one fifty-three one hundred.
So move, Mayor. Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item, um, four eleven.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item four point eleven, authorization to solicit bids for the expansion of the Upper Valley R League Building, also known as the Uval Building. The expansion will allow the, for a cone to be added, which is used for baking and drying clay and pottery, which will further enhance the service of the Uval Building. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve the, um, the building of, um, of, um, is it a real room that you all need there?
Correct, yes, sir.
At, um...
Army.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
You, you don't know how much it's going to cost you?
We had estimated about twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Item thirteen.
Twelve.
Twelve, I'm sorry. Sanchez.
Hey. Okay, good afternoon, Council and Mayor. I come before you on behalf of Chief Sanchez for approval of resolution supporting the submission of E grant to the office of the governor, two thousand eighteen State Homeland Security Grant Program for the Mission Fire Department. The grant will allow the purchase of two portable LED light towers. There is no cash match required for this grant. The approximate amount of equipment is twenty-three thousand dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Fifteen thirty-nine.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve, uh, resolution fifteen thirty-nine.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item, um, four thirteen, Ms. Bella.
Good afternoon. Item four thirteen is approval of the tax collection report for the month of January two thousand eighteen. The total, twenty seventeen total adjusted tax levy was twenty million ninety-six thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-eight cents, and the amount of the collections as of January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen is seventeen million one hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and nine dollars and eighty-three cents, which represents eighty-five point eighteen percent of the total tax levy. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We need to approve the, um, the report of the tax collection levy?
I'm want to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Item four fourteen, Ms. Bella?
Item four fourteen is the approval of the January two thousand eighteen financial statements. Unadjusted beginning fund balance was thirty million fifty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. Total revenues for the month were fourteen million seven hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars, and total expenditures were eleven million six hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, leaving an unadjusted ending fund balance of thirty-three million one hundred and eighty-four dollars and three hun- one hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So actually, what you're, you're reporting is thirty-three million one eighty-four, right?
Yes.
Okay, we did a motion to approve the ending of our fund balance.
I'm want to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjust our ending fund balance by thirty-three million one hundred and eighty-four dollars and three hundred and sixty-one dollars, and they say Mission doesn't have any money. So we just got the tooth out of it today. Motion carries. Four fifteen.
Item four fifteen is the approval of the attached budget amendments. We have two, one in the general fund and one in the designated purpose fund. In the general fund, we have expenditures of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, which is to allocate funds for the settlement claim from IOC in reference to the Mile Two North Road Construction Project. City Council authorized city staff to finalize the claim on November thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. And then we have, in the designated purpose fund, revenues of nine thousand seven sixty-five and expenditures of the same amount to allocate the funds awarded by the Law Enforcement Officer Standards and Education from the Texas Controller of Public Accounts for continuing education of peace officers. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, so we need to approve a budget amendment of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand and one for nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-five.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do, we do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the budget amendments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
I do want you to know that three hundred and ninety-nine is almost, um, almost, um, fully funded by the state.
That's correct, sir.
These are reimbursements. Don't think that it's money that that's ours. This is money that we've been able to get from the state to help us, and the nine thousand is also...
A grant.
A grant. A grant from the state, from the governor's office. Okay, four sixteen.
Mayor, City Council. Item four sixteen is authorization to enter into an interlocal agreement between the Rio Grande Valley Communications Group and the City of Mission for the installation of a P twenty-five radio antenna system. This agreement between the Communications Group and the City of Mission, Mayor and City Council, uh, the Communications Group is agreeing to pay for the tower lease where the antenna system will go on a yearly basis. They will approve for the payment of the telephone line to connect the system on a yearly basis. The Communications Group will also, after the one-year warranty of the equipment, they will replace any type of equipment that needs replacement. They will provide service if the system goes down. They will, in turn, will also have twenty-four hour access to the building where the equipment will be stored. Staff and the city manager recommend approval of this agreement.
How much money are you talking about?
Uh, on this, sir, the, if if you remember, on this particular item, this is the equipment that you authorize expenditure on the radio system. This is part of the radio system. This particular part of the antenna system is right around about three hundred thousand dollars, sir.
Okay. Yes, Mayor, I have a question. We do, do we have a motion to go ahead and authorize to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city, between Rio Grande Valley Communications Group and the City of Mission?
More to approve.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm not scared.
Aye.
Hmm?
Aye.
One aye. Well, I'll work with you.
I said aye.
Aye, okay, two ayes.
Three ayes.
Three ayes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. This is it. Four seven.
Mayor and Council, there's one more item here. Mayor...
Do we have to go into executive session?
I would like, if the mayor and council would like, we can go into executive to discuss some legal requirements regarding this policy change.
I make a motion to...
Going to executive session.
I so move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to go into executive session.[1650.33]